Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Milani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pecob.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the June 21st, 2021 Committee of the Whole minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of June 21st, 2021.
Second. Any questions or comments, call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecob.
Aye.
Orland Ridge Utility Rates.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Milani.
Move to recommend to the Village Board to adopt an ordinance amending water and sewer rates for the Orland Ridge development.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I had a couple of questions for George and the staff. Who, just for my own, we own the pipes and the connection, but just in Orland Park. How does that?
So whenever, you can jump in anytime you want, whenever a development gets built, the developer builds the infrastructure and then turns the infrastructure over to us, and then we're responsible for it in perpetuity. As far as getting actual, the commodity from Lake Michigan, in Orland, we get ours from the Oklon Regional Water System. So once it comes into our system, the conveyance is our responsibility. So all the pipes then become our responsibility.
Okay, in this particular case, it's coming from American Water because it's not part of the Oklon system, because it's on the other side of La Grange Road.
Yes, exactly. So in this case, the American Water also gets it from Lake Michigan, but, so our commodity just for that small area is, comes in to the subdivision through American Water, and then we, once subdivision all done, and we take ownership of it, all of that infrastructure then becomes ours.
Okay, it says that we're charging, we're going to put an add-on cost to here.
Yeah.
But it's for the routine operations, but it's also for capital improvements, debt service, payments to the Village of Oklon and Regional. It seems like we're adding on other charges to them that they don't really...
You know, if we could, Kevin has a little PowerPoint here.
So I think I can answer that question. So we do that with all of our water systems. So what that says is that boilerplate, that language, that we pay for our entire water system through our water bill. So that includes all of our infrastructure, includes our Oklon, includes all of that for our entire water system. This water system is still part of the Village Board of Park, but it's not part of the Oklon system, it's part of the American Water system, but still part of all of our overall infrastructure. So they're still paying for that, but American Water is more expensive than out of the Oklon Water System, so that's why there's that charge. Did I sufficiently answer that?
We've solved it. Does American Water pay for the capital improvements, or does, we do?
It is now our system, and we will be responsible for maintaining it, and we run our overall water system at a break-even to cover all of our costs associated with all of the capital improvements, getting the water, delivering the water, all of your water meters, all of that stuff, and the staff to support all of that. That is basically all calculated, and our rates are set to basically break-even. So it's not that the villages are making money on that, they're just, we're just trying to recoup all of our costs for operating the entire system, and we are actually in the middle of a water rate study that will set our rates for the next, what, four years or five years?
Yep. And so that, really, the only difference in this situation is where are we getting our water from? And the commodity cost in Orland Ridge is higher than the commodity cost from Oklon. So it's that differential that we're tacking on.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you guys want to go through his PowerPoint?
Unless somebody has a need that they want to see it.
Okay.
Anybody want to see the?
It's riveting. Anybody care to see the PowerPoint? Okay, any other questions or comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecob.
Aye.
Water system evaluation, meter replacement program, leak detection system, and rate study requests for proposals.
So this is only for discussion, so this, we will see the presentation on. Thank you.
Thank you. So, staff has been working on an RFP, draft RFP for an evaluation of our water system, so tonight, we're going to provide an overview of what is included in that, the scope of that, for discussion tonight. So, over the past, in the past, the village has been on a five-year, has done rate studies every five years, set up rate increases for each of those years, the next five years. Last one was done a number of years ago, and we had planned to do that rate study. It was in the budget this year, and so we're commencing that now. Overall, the goal of the study is to determine sufficient and appropriate rates, not too high, not too low, but a five-year study, again, to cover, just like the mayor mentioned a few minutes ago, capital, debt service, regional water system payment schedule, and to potentially review if there's anything related to Orland Ridge that's different. We're also looking for items related to the billing cycle, if we need to make any modifications to our existing billing cycle, things along those lines when it comes to the rate study. Another component of this RFP that we are hoping to include is a review of our meter replacement program, or our water system, from that perspective. So the village is in the midst of a meter replacement program. We've replaced about 16% of our overall meters, and we've been doing that as a kind of a phased-in approach over time. So there really are two ways to do a meter replacement program. One of them is a phase-in project, as we are doing now. This spreads the cost out over multiple years, and it can be done with existing staff. However, a lot of times, that, it makes it difficult to change manufacturers if you need to, or if there were any other modifications to your system that need to be made. It's a longer-term investment, things along those lines. If the other approach is taken, where meters are replaced all at one time, that provides us an opportunity, if the technology changes and one manufacturer becomes more advanced than the other, or meets different needs, you have the ability to switch your meters out all at one time. That does require a higher initial investment at that point, and so sometimes that requires outsourcing a component of that, but it does get the conversion done quicker. In addition to all of that, there is a consistency of meter inventory in the field. So as time goes on, manufacturers sometimes modify the technology that may be available to the meters, or they change models or things like that. So this provides that all of the meter inventory remains consistent when things are switched out. Let's see, just a little background, before I get into this, a majority of the village's meters were replaced from about 2000, excuse me, 1996 and 2008. So they are reaching the end of their life, and as meters get older, they do slow down over time, they read less. So once they end, meet the end of their useful life, then they start to slow down, and that would, the water meters are cash registers in the field, so what, we collect less, and it's not measuring accurately the water that is consumed by each of our customers, and that spreads the cost unfairly to those that are using water and things like that. And again, about 16% of our meters have been replaced. So the villages, another component of this relates to leak detection. So one of the, what the village has been doing now, to date, has been a leak detection program that is determined when we know an area has experienced a leak, or we suspect an area has a leak. So what that entails typically is, we see a leak, we observe a leak, or there's something, you know, in the infrastructure that would indicate, would have us deploy resources to find that leak. One of the things we would like to do is to evaluate whether a more permanent system would be in place. So the system could actually detect leaks well before they could be observed, and well before we can actually deploy resources in the field. And that could save quite a bit of time and quite a bit of money in lost water, if we were able to detect that there was actually a leak that was occurring. So that is, that is the main impetus for that program, and that bullet on loss control should not be there, so I apologize for that. So there are three work efforts planned for this, or they in the draft RFP right now. The first one, it relates to a water system evaluation, including the meter replacement program. So this would be an independent review of how we are currently replacing our meters, do we have the best manufacturer that meets our needs? And we currently have census meters in a census system, and very well could be that that is the best option available to us at this time. But also just to understand if we are approaching this in the most appropriate way, most effective way, given staff resources, and the meters in our system as well. The other relates, the next work effort relates to the leak detection system, and then once we have some sense for whether or not we're going to move forward, or have a recommendation on either these systems, then we would incorporate the rate study to ensure that all of those capital costs, if there are any, would be captured in the rate study, also factoring things like existing debt that we know is coming down, that the village has issued, also regional water system debt, things along those lines that we know are going to be happening and affecting the water fund in years to come. The RFP, as it is written, calls for fixed not-to-exceed-price proposals, but also if there is an alternate rate structure, some instances in other communities, they've had a savings-sharing type of arrangements. Of course, in all instances, we are calling for the fixed price, and whatever is the best interest of the village is what we would eventually make a recommendation for at that, as we need to make the recommendation and proposal. So with that, I entertain any questions. We do have public work staff that was also involved with reviewing the RFP, so we'll be able to answer questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Milani.
Quick question. So you said 16% of our meters have been replaced. Looking at the report, there's about 24,000 meters in the field?
Yes, yes.
So over the course, from 1996 till now, we've only replaced 16% of them?
No, since 2014.
Since 2014?
2014.
But still, I guess that's...
And that's due to the fact that we're doing it in-house, correct?
Correct.
That's all we can do.
And that also has to deal with the fact that usually when you replace a meter, you have to get into the household anyway, so...
Yes.
So two issues, one, that we're doing it ourselves, two, we have to depend on the homeowner to let us in.
That's correct.
Okay. And the second question, I guess, the leak detection that we're doing today, I received a letter telling me I had a leak after I used 20,000 extra gallons one month. How do we do that today?
So that letter that you received, that really, I suspect that that relates to your specific property, you're at the meter at your home. So we have meters register every day, how much water you use. We don't necessarily see that every time, every day, but there are, we do get alerts when there is abnormally high usage, or when we look at the reeds and we see certain customers have abnormally high usage, then we do reach out to them to ask if they've got a, they may have a leak, they may have something that they are unaware of, so that they can stop that as soon as possible, rather than waiting till they actually receive the bill, because there is a lag from the day that the reed happens until the bill actually hits. So we try to reach out to those customers as soon as we can, so that they can stop that water from leaking. It's bad for the system, and the customers don't like to see the large bill from the high water usage. So that's, it relates to this individual account, rather than a main infrastructure leak that we may or may not be able to see.
So it was just noted as an anomaly during the billing cycle, so it was called out?
That's correct.
Versus actually a system? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So I'd just like to say, I appreciate that we're looking at fixed-fee structures, particularly when we have projects that have very fixed scope, and we don't anticipate a lot of changes to the requirements. I think that's a better approach. It's a very minor point, but I know we said all-in, not to exceed, but not to exceed in my ears, sounds like a T&amp;M, so we might want to just change the language on that to an all-in fixed-fee structure when we put it out. Otherwise, very happy to see this.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
How many, how much staff is, works on this, like on a daily basis, from 2014 to now, to do 14%? Is it one or two guys, or crew? Is it, I'm just curious as to how they did this, and how quickly then the outside contractor would come in and be able to do this? I just have no idea.
So Ken can answer that, but I do believe it's two people that we have that are focused on meters, but that's not their only job.
Sure.
They have other responsibilities. So in the normal course of business, you know, we get calls for, you know, something wrong here or there, and when they're in there doing it...
When there was something wrong, when we hear something, it wasn't just like on a schedule, like every, we were trying to get ten done a week or something?
They're trying to get it, they try to get on a schedule when they can.
Can I speak up?
Yeah. Take a mic.
So actually, our water meters, we started replacing the water meters actually two years ago. Not to just, I don't know some of the information, I don't think is 100% correct. We started putting smart point registers in to get, for our meter reading program. We physically started replacing meters actually two years ago. We use two staff members. We use, one is dedicated full-time to it, the other one, we have him fill in when we have a larger workload. So, sorry, I'm not trying to, you know, the numbers just aren't making sense.
So we're able to get, if it's been done for two years, we're able to get 8% a year, so it'd take us 12, 13 years to get all of them done.
And what do we think, back to my question, what do we think this RFP, whoever, you know, is granted the contract, how long do we think they'll, excuse me, if you get them all done, and we get them done in two years, then we're dealing with the same thing in, what, 15, 20 years from now, where they all need to be done again?
So what we're not doing right now is, we are not putting out a bid for meter replacement. All we're doing is an evaluation.
Gotcha.
Are we doing it the right way? Is there a better way to do it? We might be doing it the right way. You know, this is just really just to evaluate holistically.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
You know, we've had neighboring communities that have had issues with water meters failing or overcharging people. Is there something built into this bid that addresses that? Like what is their failure rate? Is there insurance against it?
We're very cognizant of that issue, and so that would definitely be an issue that we discuss with any, anyone who was, would have any commentary or just evaluation of any part of our water system, whether it's just the rates or evaluating the system itself. We are definitely cognizant of that as a sensitive issue that has affected neighboring communities, and we...
There's a lot of lessons learned from that one.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, but again, it's not, at this point, we're not picking a new meter or anything. All we're doing is just evaluating, are we doing it the right way?
Maybe the failure rate on their meters, if...
Well, the other thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, if typically if meters fail, they stop counting water, and people actually get charged less. So everybody else ends up picking up a bigger portion of the water bill as we do a rate study.
That's correct.
Correct?
So when, generally, when these meters fail, or start failing, they undercount. So it's to the, it's to the user's advantage, because they pay less for their water. Now, in that neighboring community, it was actually the reverse, the meters they brought in overcounted, and that was a very, that was an anomaly with what they had selected.
If we had meters doing that, we would catch that, because we have a meter at our main, at all of the mains, where they're counting that too, right? So if we get something that starts coming in at overusage, we're going to see that there's discrepancy between what we're actually pumping through our system and what we're getting at the, at the meters at the homes.
Thank you.
The only thing that I have is, what I'd like to see here, and maybe I missed it, it might be in here, there's three different work efforts here in the RFP. What I'd like to see is the ability, because I, I mean, I'm not sure that this is the case, but I'm assuming that there's some companies that are better at one than the other.
Correct.
I'd like to see that they can bid each one individually, and then also have a total package for all three, if they decide to give us a discount if they get all three. So that way, we get the best prices individually, and then if somebody wants to give us a discount if they get all three, they can do that. So I would suggest that you change the RFP to make sure that's reflective.
That is in there, because you are correct, not everyone can do all three.
Right, okay, I just missed it. All right. Great, any other questions or comments? All right, let's move on to the next.
Glenn B. Bowley Farm Petition for a Certificate of Appropriateness for Demolition and/or Major Changes to the Farmhouse and/or Other Structures.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Regarding case number 2021-0047, also known as the Bowley Farm Certificate of Appropriateness, I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the Certificate of Appropriateness for demolition and/or major changes to the farmhouse and/or other structures for scenario 2A as presented at the June 29th, 2021 Plan Commission, and as provided in the Bowley Farm Historic Assessment and Feasibility Study, Addendum 1, Planning Scenarios Prepared by the Village of Orland Park Development Services Department, and dated June 24th, 2021, subject to the condition of replacing the greenery for the threshing barn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Well, first, why don't you go ahead and give us the, do you have a presentation here?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Trustee Compass stated, this is a petition for a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition and/or major changes to the farmhouse and/or other structures at the Glenn B. Bowley Farm. To give us some context, the location is at 8041 151st Street. It's highlighted on the map above. It's generally surrounded by residential, single-family residential development and Silver Lake Golf Course. Some quick history, the Village Board of Trustees purchased a 5.8-acre Bowley Farm with open lands funds for $560,000 in 2001. In 2008, the Bowley Farm was added to the Local Register of Historic Places as a local landmark. And then, beginning in 2020, there were some concerns on the property as to the safety of some of the structures on-site, which included budget funding for the demolition of some of the structures, but not those that were utilized with Hank's Farm Stand. And then in 2021, the village contracted with Maguire, Gilleski &amp; Associates to conduct a historic assessment and feasibility study. The purpose of why we're here, because the structure is a landmark, it has to obtain certificate of appropriateness approval, similar to those historic structures in Old Orland for the demolition or major changes to the structure itself. Where we're at in the process, the, because the Bowley Farm, this item was purchased with open lands funds, a presentation was made to the Open Lands Fund Commission. In addition to that, their recommendation was brought before the Planning Commission, which took place at a public hearing on June 29th, 2021, and their recommendation is being presented here, and then ultimately, it will be up to the Village Board to approve, deny, approve with conditions, the certificate of appropriateness. Some of the standards that the Board should consider in terms of demolition, the buildings themselves or structures are not structurally sound, the, that the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if the building or structure were retained, the cost of repair of the building or structure exceeds the value of the land and building, thus creating a hardship for the owner, and then that a historic landmark survey has been conducted to document the historic and architectural significance per our Land Development Code. Just very briefly, generally, that, what does it mean to be structurally sound, free from flaw, defect, or decay? And each of the structures located on the Bowley Farm said was evaluated in the Historic Assessment and Feasibility Study. Can the property retain or yield a reasonable return? Overall, the return that the village sees remains about the same, whether or not the structures are in place. So it's not the typical evaluation, some may say this one, this criteria wouldn't be applicable, but essentially, the covenants that exist on the property and are to remain on the property require that it be utilized for open space or recreational purposes, so it does not necessarily affect the value to have the structures. Similarly, the cost of the repair of the building exceeds the value of the land, again, because of the covenants and the restrictions that are already placed on the property, it's not as if the village is looking to redevelop it or sell it for a profit, so this criteria is difficult to apply in the instance where these covenants have already been placed on the land. And then finally, yes, because of the consideration that began in 2020 about some of the structures that were on-site, the village has retained a qualified historic preservation consultant in order to document the historic, to provide a historic assessment, and then provide feasibility study for some of the stabilization, rehabilitation, and demolition costs associated with future actions. And then to help guide some of the decisions that will need to be made, the Planning Department and the Development Services Department put together several scenarios that highlight what structures would be retained, what structures potentially could be removed, and then what the, you know, potential options would be for the different commissions that they were presented to, and then as well as for the Village Board tonight. Obviously, any combination could be selected, but these were the ones that were put together, given the amount of options that there were. So the three different scenarios provide a range of options for us to, again, retain certain aspects of the historic structures, and understanding that the cost estimates put together provide a range of options and potential future costs to be absorbed by the village. Some of the limitations, before we go into the breakdown of the costs provided by the three scenarios, is that these costs only anticipated exterior changes to the structures. The building interiors were not investigated for bringing things to a certain standard or potential future uses. Obviously, there, currently, there is not a future use designated, aside from what the site is currently used for, is, which is passive recreation, as well as the farm stand that is on-site. The long-term costs are unknown, again, without a clear direction on what the site would be used for, it's on, it's difficult to program, and then difficult also to estimate those costs at this point. Some of the, what, if demolition is chosen, it's documented in the report that we would like to salvage key artifacts from the different sites or different buildings on-site, and a location for those has not been determined, but potentially one or more of the structures on the site could be utilized for storage of the artifacts until a better spot is found. And then they provide a different timeframe for imminent need, the need for demolition, the need for stabilization, and then potentially, three-to-10-year timeframe for restoration, rehabilitation. So in scenario one, the save and stabilize the 19th-century structures, a majority of the structures are retained, and with the exception of the privy, the grain dryer enclosure, the garage, and the machine shed, and this is based off of the village's consultant's recommendation for the particular buildings that could be removed with, that did not have a high level of historical significance, and the others would be retained, stabilized, and potentially rehabilitated. In that cost scenario, the immediate need of demolition sums to approximately $58,300. The stabilization needs in a one-to-three-year timeframe are $151,300. And then the rehabilitation efforts, which were recommended by the historic preservation consultant, and also the cost estimates provided here were retained by a subconsultant of the historic preservation consultant. The total amount for this scenario would be $1,311,600. And then in scenario two, this basically, it removes additional structures or a majority of the structures, documenting the historic significance of them, and salvaging any key artifacts that are present. This acknowledges the fact that there's existing working farm in the Village of Orland Park, the Stella Wagon Farm, and then it retains the additional structures, the threshing barn, the ground barn, and the silo, which are the structures now utilized for the farm stand. Increasing the amount of demolition costs in a, you know, zero-to-one-year timeframe, and reducing some of the... and reducing some of the stabilization or rehabilitation costs, the total for Scenario 2 is approximately $834,600. And then Scenario 2A is similar to Scenario 2, except it preserves a portion of the, or preserves the milk house because it happens to be attached to the ground barn, which would reduce the amount of demolition that was necessary. But in addition to that, it also preserves portions, or contemplates preserving portions of the foundations of the sites that are, or the buildings that are removed in order to program the site for potentially historic tour where plaques could be displayed where the existing buildings were, and then it guides the user to retain some portion of the existing building, but then also give them some historical background as to what used to be there.
Can I stop you right here? Because these numbers don't match what you have up here. It's, you're rehabbing the threshing barn here, which we're actually getting rid of here, and there's no demo numbers on it. We're keeping the granary, and we've got demo numbers here, and we don't have rehabilitation numbers here. We're saving the milk house, which should have rehabilitation numbers on it, and it's got demo numbers on it. So these numbers here in Scenario 2A don't match.
So are you referring to the scenario that...
I'm saying right now. Look at, so what we're saying, look what those numbers say. We're saying we're rehabilitating the threshing barn. We're not, right?
The threshing barn is number four.
Okay.
So that is, that is part of the rehabilitation.
Okay. I'm sorry, you have it listed here in, so we've got a 2, a 2A, and a 2B?
Correct.
There's a 2B and a 2C.
Got it.
That, the two, I apologize. These were, these scenarios were presented to the Planning Commission prior to them making the recommendation to change out the threshing barn for the granary.
Okay, so what do we recommend, what was the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to approve the certificate appropriateness in line with Scenario 2A, exchanging the demolition of the threshing barn with the demolition of the granary. And that should be reflected in your packets in 2B or 2C.
They're recommending 2B.
Correct.
What's the difference between 2B and 2C?
I believe I can answer that. I think the difference is 2B was the recommendation from the Plan Commission to substitute the granary for the threshing barn, and 2C includes the threshing barn.
Correct. With, yes, correct.
Okay, so it's all three.
Includes the threshing barn and the granary in 2C. My apologies.
All right, cool. All right, now I'm clear.
Okay. So the total of Scenario 2A that was originally presented at the Planning Commission was $715,300. The open lands recommendation included a five-to-o vote recommending to the Plan Commission and to the Village Board that the demolition and stabilization efforts provided in Scenario 1 would be selected until such time that the village has determined a long-term plan and/or vision for the use of the property. So calling for a master plan of the Bowley Farm area. The Plan Commission recommendation, Plan Commission held a public hearing on June 29, 2021. They presented the findings of facts and the scenarios 1, 2, and 2A. The discussion at the Planning Commission talked about the potential hazards inside the building, the future uses on the site, the stewardship of the taxpayer money, and the limitation on the cost estimates that were presented. They voted six to one to recommend to the Village Board to approve the demolition and stabilization provided in Scenario 2A, subject to the condition of replacing the granary and the, for the threshing barn. And then the discussion in regards to maintaining the, or in regards to the threshing barn and the granary, that came up when the question was posed to the existing owner of the farm stand as to what buildings he would need to operate the farm stand. Originally, it was the ground barn, the silo, and the threshing barn, and he had noted that if there was any way to save the granary, that he would be, he would be in favor of that. So the Planning Commission went along, or recommended as such.
So the Planning Commission recommended that we do 2B, which is the not doing the threshing barn, doing the milk house, the silo, the ground barn, and the granary.
Correct.
That's the recommendation.
And it is now before the committee for discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So, you know, first off, I just, Ed's already mentioned it, but I just want to reassure the residents that this land is going to continue to be used for open space and recreation. That's not going to change as far as what we're talking about here. Secondly, I'd like to thank both the open lands and the Plan Commission, who spent a considerable amount of time talking and reviewing this. The Plan Commission spent over two and a half hours discussing this last week. I know, because I listened to it all. I'd like to thank Chairman Preece for making sure that the, for the people that came were speaking into the microphone, taking notes much easier beyond the 94-page assessment that we went through for this. I also went over to the farm to visit with another trustee, just to look at the buildings myself. Bowley Farms suffered from a lack of planning and consideration for upkeep. And I believe previous administrations had good intentions in acquiring the property, but they failed to maintain it, right? So we're now looking at needing pounds of cure for what might have been ounces of prevention in the past. Is that not correct?
One could categorize it as that.
So we purchased this in 2001 for $560,000. Scenario 1 is more than double that to try to save the buildings over a 10-year period. My bet, and I believe I heard the Plan Commissioners in agreement here, is that the $1.3 million is a rough estimate, and that once the walls start taking, get taken down, we're going to start finding some unpleasant surprises, and we're likely to see that number climb. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, there are unknown costs with some of the recommendations that were made. Correct.
Okay. And then I also heard Commissioners Paul and Zatar note that the estimates would address cosmetics, but not necessarily full-on allowing people to enter the structures. Is that also correct?
Correct. The cost estimates were put together without a plan to have people actually touring the interiors of the buildings.
Okay. So the 1.3 million is just a baseline. I think we're likely leaning away from that number. That certainly is a lot for me to swallow. To my knowledge, Bowley and Stellwagen Farms were purchased roughly two years apart in 2001 and 2003, respectively. Neither, correct me if I'm wrong, neither had a master plan until 2017, when a plan was finally created for Stellwagen. We still do not have a plan for Bowley Farm, other than the implied continuation of the farm stand. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So I think, you know, when I first learned of this assessment, my immediate thought is, like, what are we going to do with this property in the long term? We have to have a plan to know and make a good decision about the remediation for these buildings. And I think it's up to the Board to come up with that plan. I appreciate the difficulty that Plan Commission must have felt trying to make a recommendation without having any of that in front of them. Switch gears to the demolition side of the costs. Plan Commissioners mentioned that they believe the demolition costs associated to the scenarios were higher than they expected, but during the meeting suggested that those costs might be lower if Bowley was not considered a historical farm. Is that accurate? Is there additional work that's required in demolition because of the preservation?
Yes, I generally... ...for demolition and an attempt to salvage key artifacts from the site.
Okay. And then I briefly mentioned that, you know, the village learned of potentially hazardous conditions. I'm just curious, do we have, we have the potential liability to restore as much as we can justify. Do we have any other time factors that are impacting us on this decision right now that haven't been mentioned?
I think other than the, some of the...
Okay, so do we have time to put forward the idea of putting forward a master plan by this Board before we make a decision or a recommendation on this? And I guess, I guess that's maybe more of a rhetorical question. I'll just leave that to the Board to decide and discussion with that on yield.
Trustee Healy.
Sean, I agree that there should be a master plan for all historical properties. I don't want to get into the details of them, but there's a number of them. We should have a budget for the whole entirety of when we want to spend it and how much, rather than piecemealing it. It should be... Why, I would just suggest that...
Trustee Healy.
Okay. The, why, I would suggest, this may be unpopular, but some people want a ... and why don't we sell off some other, since we over... The open lands seem they spent... They would have saved some money, do this demolition and some other of these upkeep. We...
There are two. Can you talk about the life estate?
Right. There was a life...
Allow the... To be... Both. Which... Can um... ...then a... ...farm. So I think that was, and rather than going to the expense of a master plan for yet another working farm, which I think we already have one, and yes, we were a farming community, but how many farms do we need to continue to save? And it's still going to look like a farm, but do we need to save every building there? Additionally, if you look at the farmhouse, we're saving a house like that at Stellwagen already. There's a likelihood that another house in town is, that's historic, that's on the U.S. Historic Registry, is going to end up being ours to take care of, which was our founder's house. How many 1860s-period houses do we need in Orland Park to identify that in fact we were around in the 1860s? So I think that was the general reason for that, and it kind of short-circuits to the expense of a master plan, as well as still identifies it as a farm and obviously keeps an open land, open space for the people and the residents to enjoy.
Sure. No, I agree with all that. I was just concerned by looking at some of those foundations, if we weren't going to do something to kind of guide people through there, some of them could end up being a safety hazard. I mean, looking at the house, the foundation sticks out of the ground almost two feet. So, you know, I was concerned if we were just going to leave a foundation there with, you know, no barrier around it or no protection, that things like that could be unsafe. And another thing is, if you look at the overall project here, I feel like, you know, kind of we might be putting the cart before the horse. I mean, we were looking at demolishing a bunch of buildings and then hoping we'd come up with a way to program around them, instead of having this solid master plan in place on how we want to utilize these lands. Because we're spending the taxpayers' money on this, is really the bottom line. And, you know, while it's a beautiful farm, it's a beautiful land, and really, walking through there, I was talking this morning, and this land can be used for different things. I mean, we could have different programming, different events, arts and crafts fairs. I mean, things that kind of draw you into a farm and to make you think you're at a farm. Because right now, looking at that place, who wants to go there and say, "I can't wait to go visit Bowley Farm this morning"? I don't think anybody here thought about doing that this morning. But they do go there for the farm stand. It's pretty popular. People do go there. So if we can have draw to this area and have other events and things like that, that's where I was concerned if we leave some of these foundations on the property, that we're kind of cutting off a lot of open space there that could be used for other things. So that's why I was asking about the, about the foundations. But obviously, the buildings need to be repaired or demolished as needed. We want to keep the farm stand in business. However, I think going back to really my whole, my key point is, we need to establish some type of programming and some kind of master plan on how we're going to use this land. Otherwise, I really, other than the possible harm that could come from these buildings, I don't really see a purpose for the project, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I have a question for you. So you said it was used for like passive recreation, so it's obviously open for the public and Sean and, you know, Mike were able to go there today and take a look around. And so if it's not structurally safe and people are able to just go in inside of it, I don't know, that's a little bit concerning. But I don't know, when you said passive recreation...
So, yeah, there's been, there's been groups that have taken photos there, and then there was commentary that was presented in the commission meetings about people sledding or walking near there, but there not necessarily access to any of the structures, so to speak. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So just to clarify my earlier position, I think maybe master plan was sounded a bit heavier than what my intention is. I think we just, for me, I'd like to know that we have a plan. I'm not looking for us to be spending a lot of money doing a lot of research and feasibility studies and the rest. I'm just looking for, are we comfortable with this being a farm stand five years from now? And if that's, if that's the case, which I'm okay with, then I think that helps color my decision as to which of these scenarios I'd be leaning towards. So I'm not, I'm not looking for us to be spending a ton of money on this. In fact, that's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
Any other comments? All right, so before we vote on this, so very, very frustrating that we purchased this in 2001 with a $20 million bond. It's not the only open lands that we purchased. The open lands bond was for purchasing, restoring, and maintaining. We went on a $20 million buying land spree. For the most part, until the last few years, with a few million dollars left, we did some restoration, but we didn't do any restoration. We didn't do any maintaining. We shoved that all on the rest of, on the taxpayers of the village. So not only did you give them a bond, but you gave them this other big giant fund called the village operating expenses. We just keep shoveling money at these things. Unfortunately, as a Board, 20 years after we bought it, we're stuck, we're stuck with this farm. And it's not that we're stuck with a farm, it's just that we're stuck with 20 years of neglect on something that was already 140 years old. You think it got better in 20 years, or did it get exponentially worse? Because we did nothing. And that's when there was $20 million approved by the residents, on a very narrow margin, by the way. I think it was like 5149, okay? On a very narrow margin. And you took that, and you didn't do anything, I mean, it's, unfortunately, we all have to deal with that because we're here now. What I don't want to do is keep kicking this can down the road and not maintaining it, not doing anything with it, okay? It should have been done sooner. But the reality is, does Orland Park need two working farms? I believe, maybe the Board disagrees with me, but I believe the answer is no. Okay, we know we were a farming community, but we don't need to keep operating farm after farm after farm after farm to prove that we were a farming community. How many farming, how many farms can you program? We have a plan for Stellwagen Farm. It's in better condition than this. It's been, there's been more money put into it to restore it. We have a walking path already around it. It seems like we're, we're already committed to Stellwagen Farm. Do we need a second place to program? We have 66 parks. We can't program them all. We can't program Crescent Park, Dugan Park, Brown Park, and every park. I mean, we don't have the staff. You know, we do how many? 17 free musical events at various locations. You know, so we have a lot to program. Hank's seems to do well there. People like it. People, it does look like a farm. It's an operating farm. It's an operating farm stand. We do believe that in the future, that if, you know, when Hank decides to hang it up and retire, that we'll be able to find someone that will want to do that. So it serves a purpose for the community. It looks like a farm. Back to, my original point was, we want something that's an open space people can use. It looks like a farm and continues to look like a farm, which with these two buildings, it will still look like a farm. We will restore the two buildings that are even, according to Hank, who's the farmer, says are the most historical buildings on there. The farmhouse would cost us an arm and a leg. I'd rather use that on Humphrey and, you know, and Stellwagen than continue for something that's going to be a passive site. And as far as spending a bunch of money on a master plan, I don't think it's real complicated here. It's like, put some interpretive signage, put a few paths in there. We do that with parks all the time and we don't have big master plans for it. So I think the planning commission did us a good service by having that discussion and coming up with that plan where, hey, we save a couple of things to keep it looking like a farm. We put interpretive signage in, we put some walking paths in, we save the foundations so that we know that this used to be a farm and people can look at the history. Obviously, Sarah will do a great job of putting what the history of those buildings are. So I think that's, that's great. We're going to continue to have Hank's site there, which is great. But at some point, we have to rip the Band-Aid off and we have to deal with this because it was, the can was kicked down the road for two decades ultimately. So we have to deal with it. There's a plan here that deals with it. It's the least expensive of the plans and it keeps the two buildings, keeps it historic, keeps it a farm. And, you know, obviously, it's far less than the first plan that was presented. It's almost, it's about a third of that. So I think that's a much wiser use of our money. If we wait another year to do this, the buildings are going to be in worse shape. It's going to take even longer. So, you know, I think this, like I said, the planning commission spent two and a half hours discussing it. I think they had a really good discussion. And I think it makes it pretty clear that, you know, or at least I think that their recommendation was a, was a good one. And it's the most cost-effective and it does, and I think it accomplishes the goal, at least my goals, which is, it stays open lands, still looks like a farm, people can still use it. I think it accomplishes those goals. And it restores it. It's a shame that they made it a landmark status without bothering, they went through all the trouble of making it landmark status, but didn't bother to have a plan and didn't bother to fix anything first. So you tie our hands to make it even harder to deal with it, which just indicates to me that the goal was never about what's best for the long term. It was about acquisition. And, you know, that's a shame. Because it should have been what's best for the long term, to Trustee Healy's point. You know, we could have used some of that other money that we used to acquire things and we could have actually had a better, a better plan. So anyways, that's my two cents. With that, so the motion on the table is to approve scenario 2C, or excuse me, 2B, 2A. I would...
Point of order. It's 2A with the exchange of the threshing barn for the granary. So that is scenario 2B.
That is actually 2B. So that's scenario 2B that we are, so we are approving scenario. So let's clean up that language and I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to amend this to approve scenario 2B, because that's actually what we're approving, correct?
So just, this is, this is exactly the approval from planning commission. So this is how they, they had...
Well, I would, I will amend the, I would entertain a motion to amend the planning commission's recommendation to approve scenario 2B.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would say is if we could do it with any, with any expense saved on things that Sean talked about, that if it's not a landmark or if there's something we're not going to save, if there's any expenses, because I agree with you that, you know, the taxpayers didn't sign up for, for that type of investment, so.
Okay. Call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Rudin?
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecov?
Aye. So if there's no other comments on the overall, the question is put with the amended motion to approve scenario 2B.
Call the roll. Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Rudin?
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecov?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody here to speak at the committee of the whole? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Point of order. Second.
Mr. Williams, you have three minutes.
My name's Virginia Williams. I live at 8114 Bobalink Road, right behind Bulleye's Farm. This is meeting number three for me to come. I've heard all your conversations and still yet Glenn paid for all the expenses from the time the village bought it in 2001 until when he died. So you are responsible from 2014 to present. At the same time, you have been getting in $50,000 a year for, why didn't you put it on maintenance? Why didn't, not you, but the people before you? There's been so many promises that have been given to people on what you're going to do when you're making your deals. Then you forget them. I'm satisfied with that being still open land. Very satisfied. Because there would have been an awful lot of trouble if you would have taken that away and I would have started it. I was very good friends with Glenn and his mother. I didn't purchase, my husband and I didn't purchase, till we went to see them. I was very close friends with Glenn. I know what the deals were. I know what McLaughlin did. I know what Ken, his attorney, did and how they lied. Nobody has any paperwork on any of this. Very, very funny. I have said this before in front of the planning board, but nobody mentioned about Glenn paying for everything from the time that you bought until the time he died. I'm sorry, but I feel a lot of this is Orland Park's fault. And I think you'd better be a little bit more concerned about what you do with their farm and what buildings you take down. Because a promise is a promise. You don't want to buy any more farmland? Don't take the money from the state to buy farmland. That's what caused all of this. You got Stillwater's Farm. Anybody remember what Stillwater's Farm was like 27 years ago? I do. It was worse than Bulleye's Farm. The only thing different between Bulleye Farm and Stillwater, or Stellwagen, is the village put the money into it and the family is there to help out. Not fair, guys. Not fair at all. I hope you all go home and think about what you're doing.
Thank you for your comments. But to be clear, nobody on this board, was on this board in 2001. In fact, I was here since 2017, three of us since 2019 and someone since 2021. So there were 16 years where this board wasn't here. And I think you heard us say very clearly that the village did not do their job to take care of this. But we are stuck with what is left here. And what I'm not going to do, no matter how many people come and complain and say there were promises, well, first off, I don't know what promises were made. Secondly, I'm not going to spend $2 or $3 million of taxpayer money. I think that money is better given to our police department. It's better given to our other parks. We have to deal with the here and now and what the situation is today. And I think the board has made a good decision here, which is, we're making it look like, we're keeping it a farm and we're keeping it open land. It does not make sense to try and save every single building on that, on that farm. I don't think this board, I cannot control what future boards do, but I'm pretty sure this board, I know I am not in the land-buying business. Since I've been here in 2017, we've bought none. It's not really the village's role. There are some times where something gets blighted or something where the village has to do something with it. But I don't believe that the village should be using taxpayer money in general to acquire properties. I can't speak for the other board members, but that's, that's me. So, and I don't think you'll see that going forward. We should have used, I think you heard that from the board, you certainly heard it from me. We should have used more of those $20 million of funds for the restoration and the maintenance that we did not do. Because unfortunately, that has shifted all that burden to the taxpayers down the road. It's kicking the can down the road, is what it is. It's continuing, and we're going to stop doing that. That's what we're stopping to do tonight. So hopefully, everyone, we can't make everybody happy with every decision, but hopefully, it's going to stay a farm. It is going to stay a farm. It's going to stay open land. It's going to be a park that everyone can use. Everyone who drives by it will still say, "That was a farm." They'll know it was a farm. It's still going to be used by Hank's, which is what's been used for, been used for a long time. And the buildings that are not safe won't be there anymore. And I think that's a pretty wise use of taxpayer money. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Rudin?
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecov?
Aye.
We're adjourned. We'll start...